All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Harrison County Board of Education, March 16th, 2021. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Mr. Lopez.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Brings us down to special recognition and presentations. We don't have one.
No, I do not. No, I want to do it later.
Okay. Our next item is delegations, and we do have two delegations to speak this evening, and each delegation has five minutes to speak. First up is Gwen Acres Enterprise.
Thank you all for taking your time to hear me. I'd like to address the situation regarding the changes being made to the honor students at Lincoln High School. I would like to know, why was one person alone allowed to do this? Why was no one, no staff member, student, or parent notified about the changes? Why do it now to a class that has already lost so much, the class of 2021? These kids have lost so much through no one's fault but the pandemic, and that's who I blame the fault of them losing. These students have worked hard to make their grades. They earned bragging rights. A lot of them have also worked, played sports, marched in the band, which by the way, Lincoln High School was voted three times in a row as number one band in our county, and they should be given recognition. Out of the 20-some seniors in this class, there's over 15 that are on the National Honor Society. If you've ever had a child marching band, you know how hard they work all through the summer, all through the year. And some of them are involved in other functions, all the while keeping a high GPA. Now you don't even have to have a passing grade to play sports. If you're a standout player, you get to play. The students that have not applied themselves will be getting their participation diploma through choice boards. Teachers must give each student 50% grade, and then either the student or the teacher pick six out of nine assignments, and they pass. While they stand out, our honor students will be pushed into the flowered wallpaper and just blend in. If it's a change he is looking for, why not start with the freshman class, so they know from the start that their hard work studies will mean nothing, nothing to them? Listening to my daughter and her friends, I hear such sad, sad voices. They are heartbroken. They are suffering a loss. And I'm asking you, or maybe I'm begging you, make them changes mine. Give the class of 2021 honor students a chance to stand out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Crazy Stango.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. How are you all this evening? Thank you for allowing us to be here. We're just trying to get a voice heard, that's all. We feel like it's falling on deaf ears. We're just trying to help these kids. They're afraid. They're scared. They feel like they've been left out in the cold. They've had something taken away from them that they worked very hard for, and quite honestly, they don't think it's fair to them. We've had a lot of conversations between the parents, between the kids, between other faculty, and honestly, it's not fair. I mean, why are we here? What's it say outside? We're all learners. Everybody learns, right? We're here to achieve academic excellence. Isn't that why we're here? Would you agree with that? We're here to achieve academic excellence. That's what we strive for, and we try to make it as level the playing ground as we can make it. That's equality. If you've got a handicap, we get you access to the school. If you've got a learning disability, we get you access to that, right? That's equality. This is not fairness. Fairness is a facade. If it's fair to Jiminy, it's not fair to me. Somebody's going to get slighted somewhere. You can't recognize everybody, right? But you can recognize those who stand out in what they're doing. These National Honor Society kids stand out in academics. If you had an athlete that was signing a collegiate contract, you'd have a reporter there to cover the press conference, would you not? Why can't we do that for our academics at graduation? The epitome of academic excellence is at graduation. Let these kids stand out. What's the harm in letting your academics stand out at graduation? I don't understand. Help me understand. We're not trying to be troublemakers. We're not trying to cause issues. We just want to understand so we can go home and tell our kids, this is why. I don't have a reason. I don't understand. In 13 years in the public school system, I've never stood before you. I've never stood before anybody. And I don't understand. And I have to look at my son, who I've told for the last year, honey, none of this is going to matter in 20 years. None of this is going to matter in 20 years. Is it going to matter? I can tell you, I walked across the stage third in my class in a gold gown and a white stole. I was proud of it, and I walked across that stage like a rooster, buddy. I was proud. And I think that this senior class, if any senior class, deserves to be proud of what they've accomplished. So we're just asking for a voice. We're just asking for a reason, something that we can go home and tell our kids. It does matter what you do. Your academics do matter. You've worked hard for something. I don't know what to say. We don't have an answer for these kids. You know, you look at the mission statement, and number two on the mission statements, we'll encourage and celebrate the achievements, accomplishments, and contributions of our learning community. How is this achieving that? How is this achieving number three? Or in our philosophy about grow parents, school, and community relationships, this is breaking down relationships. I don't know. You know, we've lost respect. We've lost communication. We don't know why we're doing what we do anymore. And I'm just asking you all, give us some answers. We don't know what to do. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it. I appreciate you doing things for our students for us. Thank you.
And if I can say, we don't interact with delegations because, by law, it's not on the agenda to be able to do that. I will say, once we finish our meeting, if you want to stay around, any one of us, and Ms. Stutler will speak with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And I appreciate you coming.
Sure.
Thanks. That brings us down to superintendent's update. Ms. Stutler.
Yeah, Mr. Hamrick, we have several updates to make tonight. We actually had a meeting today talking about our summer programs. I know it's on a lot of folks' minds, and we are in a place where we do have funding for that and can do really some great things this summer for our kids, and especially to kind of go into a recovery mode and remediation for the kids that need that help. So Dr. Hay was in that meeting. We had all of the curriculum people in there. We even had Mike Book. He came and was with us today to talk about the recreational keys of the program in the afternoon. So Donna, would you like to update them on that?
Hey, you have two pieces of paper. One summarizes what we will be offering elementary schools for high schools. All programs will run June 14th to July 15th. We're looking at eight to noon. And then in collaboration with Mr. Book, Parks and Rec will be offering some enrichment opportunities and some wellness opportunities as well. Breakfast and lunch provided. Mr. Durico was in that meeting, so we're excited about that. Transportation, we're looking to work that out for each one of the sites, and we've narrowed it down. We have five elementary sites of our 13, and we have three middle schools that we're working on, and then there will be credit recovery at each one of our high schools. So that's the first sheet of paper that you have. Tells you where the locations are and what schools are at each one of those locations. And the other document that you have is we sent out a parent's interest survey two weeks ago. Each one of our schools sent it, each one of our households, and these are some numbers that parents turned in by grade level. And so, for example, if you look there, the first one on the sheet is Bridgeport Middle School that will service Bridgeport Middle School, D.I., and South Harrison Middle. And then you can see how many parents returned a form indicating they were very much interested in that summer programming. And on that interest survey, we provided the dates of June 14th to July 15th, eight to noon, and a collaboration with Parks and Rec. So you can see by grade level, the parents that turned in those forms.
We have a lot of drug addiction. We have a lot of stuff within our county. I don't know if all of the kids who need to be here are getting the information because of parents who may be dropping the ball. Is there a way that we can go with our teachers to say, to recommend, or talk to the grandparents, where the teachers are saying, listen, little Johnny is crazy far behind, and he's not going to make it next year unless, just to really push work? Because you've got a lot of parents who are disengaged, and you see it across our county where drugs are. Both parents are working all the time. They're just being raised by YouTube.
I know Mr. Kirby is working with the court system as well as the probation office. I know that we are taking these out with our social workers when we are making home visits. And if you'll notice, for example, in that middle school column, the fifth area column, it should be red on your sheet. There are red numbers for the middle schools. Those are, the school will directly refer those students if it's red, and then the black numbers are ones that parents have indicated interest. So the black are the voluntary parents, and the red are what each middle school particularly will recommend in that program, group teacher recommendation, principal recommendation. We obviously have some of that going on in our elementary schools as well, and they've been looking very closely at the numbers that they had in the semester and making recommendations of that. We're working closely with Energy Express as well as Project Isaac to pull some students into those programs as well.
We also are going to have a counselor at each site. We talked about that today. We originally were thinking about doing it in a, but since we reduced the number of sites, we can provide a counselor at every site, and we will request that principals make recommendations for the students that maybe would not have signed up for that. And offering bus transportation will be a huge benefit for families, so we can get them there and get them to Parks programs. We've had a couple requests from some daycares, like if they start with us, they only stay till noon, and they don't participate in the Parks piece, then we are looking to take them to those daycare centers once they're finished, so they can have a full day, or they can stay eight to noon and do the math ELA piece, and then the afternoon is more of an enrichment, physical activity, you know, Parks program with Mr. Book. He is phenomenal to work with. If you've ever had the opportunity to work with Mr. Book over the years, he will make it work. We're going to also supply him with support in his Energy Express program, so that we are mirroring everything in every site. So what he already had in place, we didn't want to change. We wanted to add to his, and then he's adding to ours with the Parks piece, so we can supply a full day of support.
And food to his programs.
And food, yeah, for his summer program.
Academics until noon?
Academics in the morning, and then the Parks piece will be.
In the afternoon?
Yes. And they will be, there's all sorts of things they'll do. They'll partner with the pools. They'll do outside activities, structured activities with the kids, so that way they can have a good afternoon and get the academic piece in the morning. We're also supplying a reading specialist, a special ed teacher at all of these sites. So we'll have counselors, special ed teacher, reading specialist, math specialist, and then our regular classroom teachers. And thankful for the SOLES grant that was made available to us, and that we sent our letter of intent, and we were notified that we would get funded for that. Of course, we still had to apply, but they gave us an amount, so that's allowing us to really expand and do really what we need to do for the summer. We're also taking part of that money, we talked about that today, like continuing into next school year. We're adding a math and a reading tutor to every building all year next year to be available for after hours for the kids. So we will be, the job descriptions are finished. We'll be posting those for next year, and the schools will utilize those. We had some schools that actually thought, you know, maybe Saturday morning. So we're going to give them so many hours for the year, and they can schedule those with what works best for their building, to make a math and a reading person available for the kids for next school year. We're looking at everything.
Was it Mountain Middle that had the?
They adjusted their time. That was when we were doing remote.
Right, right.
Yeah, they adjusted their time to have evening tutoring.
I'm just curious if that would work better than a weekend idea?
Well, the tutors we're hiring will be of an evening, but some of them, one school said, hey, can we use maybe some hours on Saturday if they see the need? So we're leaving that flexible to the schools. We're just allocating the money for the positions and then allowing the schools to use them how they, it's purely up to the community and the school, because they're all different in how they maybe want to provide services. But we just want to, I mean, we've got to continue this on through next year.
My line of thought here too is that you was kind of the first to even start, I think, us as a county to, you know, to have a summer recovery program for all of the kids and everything. But we, which we were all in favor of, but it never got out. The other counties jumped over ahead of us and put it out in there, you know, and I still don't see where we as a county, I think we need to really think, we're in the middle of March, the whole Lincoln School will be out, you've got spring break and all that. I think we need to really push it out there into the paper. I think it ought to be pushed in the news media. They need to do an interview with you and maybe with Mr. Book. I think Mr. Alvario needs to really, you know, get on that pretty heavy and get it out there, and pictures and everything. I think, you know, because there is a lot of kids who get missed, you know, because a lot of the kids, you know, they don't get the newspaper, or they don't, you know, they don't watch the TV news or whatever, but maybe, you know, you get the parents' attention, and especially if it's on a continuous basis between now and the end of the.
Well, we sent out the initial survey to get an idea from the parents or signups, so we have an ideal number so we could determine how many sites we needed. So, and then working with Parks and Rec, it's, when you're in a larger county dealing with multiple sites, it's not quite as easy to say, we'll do one elementary one, you know what I mean? So it took some, takes coordination, and then, of course, with the whole food program and feeding the kids, there was, there's a lot more to that than, there's way, food nutrition sites we have to apply for. So everywhere that we're feeding children, we have to make applications. So all of the Parks and Rec sites, all of the school sites, we have to make applications. So there's a lot of things in the process.
And there's.
But we'll get it out. I mean, we now know our times, our dates, and all that, and we'll definitely start getting it out.
Plus, a lot of people are still getting these food boxes and what have you. They're going to look, I wouldn't see why we couldn't put a letter in the food boxes and, you know, sign it in there, throw it in there, so when they open it up, that's the first thing they see, and big letters, you know, summer school's coming, let's help your, you know, our children get stronger or whatever, and maybe they can get it in that regard too. I don't know. I mean, I know everybody's got a lot on their plate, but I think we've really got to get this out there now, through the newspapers, through the news media, through each of our schools, through the food programs, and, you know, we'll never know how successful it could be in coming after this first year of it, and there may be something that can continue from here on out. That's my opinion.
That's okay. Hey, we have an update from Mr. Lopez on facilities as well.
Yeah, I left a couple pictures for you, the handrail and that, like, in front of the ice field. We met with, there were some concerns with the old handrail. I know you all were involved in that. Joe and I went down, we met with Chad Ed, Ed Edwards, their city manager, their mayor, Pat Kavalsik, and then Perry Del Rio was able to come up with a plan to fabricate the handrail, and they are, the idea was that we would paint the materials, we would fabricate it and then have it moved to their site, and then they would do the installation. They also had it powder coated, because it was not painted. So it really does look nice. It's not, I don't know that it's all the way complete now in front of the school, but they were made in session, so they do get it, they get it easily in place, and it looks like a contractor did a nice job.
And not to throw anyone under the bus, but if you did get a phone call from someone down there, which I did not, Mr. Lopez, contractor had cut the old ones off on the other side four inches from the ground. It's kind of a hazard there that they were sticking up, but we got caught, but that was not our approval.
No.
And it wasn't the city, it was a private contractor. So they were a little worried, right off the side of the road, four inches up, and you could hear off the road, hit or hit you fall under or whatever. So hopefully those, that's taken care of.
See, I was down that way today, and they was moving out. Like I said, it ruined the, you know, they had pretty much most of it done. Everything I see there was bleeding.
Right, and provided a nice safe passageway for any walkers, students, and those that are going over to that or a field. The next item, we had a pre-construction meeting on the Moore Elementary School project on Thursday. We are planning on having a basing meeting so that we can kind of plan a year in advance some of the work that needs to be completed, so we'll know how occupied a building, what areas we'll have to capture and do some of the work. So that's some of the beginning of making a timeline for that project. We also took a look at the staging area for that, so we probably will have a basing meeting early next week. We're making plans to make the stage for that project. The Lost Creek Elementary School project, we met last week to kind of talk about the secured entrance and kind of revisited that, did a little bit of tweaking to that, have a plan to do the, as a change order, the South Harrison Middle School controlled entrance. And of course, that will, Mr. White, you will be able to have that whole campus secured, which is a positive thing for the community. We also took a look at the bus loop, and what we're trying to do is reduce the amount of traffic congestion they have when all three schools are in session. It'll be congested, but we're trying to maximize the efficiency of moving that traffic around. And we do have a meeting scheduled Thursday, 10:00. Anybody's welcome to take in.
Back to the Moore project, did you mind on it being started this summer?
Oh, it is in store here in the next couple weeks.
Oh, good.
We just, you had me come up with a plan, talk city construction. They're already starting to make some orders and enter them, because some of these construction supplies are taking a long time. Interletting.
Yeah, we just did the order to proceed last Thursday. When he got out of quarantine, he was in the attic for two weeks. So all that paperwork's in, and city windows waiting or getting ready to start.
And that's everything.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. We have an update. We had a meeting at United Technical Center. Mr. Hope?
Yeah, and he started talking also, like everybody, about some positions that he may have to, you know, lose or have to, you know, rip or whatever. But he, since the meeting, he called each member individually, and they're, they also have some monies available from different areas that they're allowed to use. So he's going to do kind of like, we're going to do Harrison out of here. He's going to use that money to keep those people in place for next year, but then a year from now, he may have to look at ripping some positions there to Career Center based on the number of, you know, dollars and the number of enrollment and things everybody else. And that was, that was probably the big thing that we, we talked about in regard to.
Yeah, I think it was his funding sources maybe changing.
Yeah.
For the technical center. Under miscellaneous, we could have put this under recognition, but we were notified earlier, it was maybe last week, that Mr. Durico was, we got a, I've got a congratulations letter. He was selected as the School Nutrition Association on the Board of Directors. He'll be the vice president for that. It's a national honor for him to do that, so we're very proud that he's representing Harrison County schools. We're glad to have him as part of our school system, and so we were notified of that. There was a press release sent out. I believe there's, I don't know how many's in that organization, just four or five? As far as the officers, you're going to be, you may step up if you'd like, because you can show us this box. I want you to see this. We have another box. Last time we showed you the multitude seven or five-day box. This is something different. He can explain what that is, but he's really doing some innovative things for us through school nutrition. So like I said, I appreciate him and what he's doing to help us out, especially even with summer programs and in this recognition. So congratulations, Mr. Durico.
Thank you.
Just one comment about that. That is a three-year commitment from me, because I was elected as vice president, and that organization moves me to president-elect, and then three years from now, I will be serving as president.
So we have to keep you employed for at least three years?
I hope you'll keep me employed that long.
I told him he got that because of pepperoni rolls, is that true?
Well.
West Virginia.
Real quick, I'm really not one to put a whole lot of personal stuff on social media, but I did meet with a core group of colleagues and said, how can I win this election? And they focused on pepperoni rolls, since it's unique to West Virginia. And I have to admit, I'd learned TikTok. They said, the best way to do this is TikTok. And I thought, okay. I'm a little bit good with social media, but TikTok was brand new, and I did some practices. And then I did go to one of the school kitchens, and we filmed the process of making pepperoni rolls.
Did you see that? Yeah. That's the next staff thing.
Well, I even was able to learn how to put Country Roads playing in the background, you know what I'm saying? So we did get a lot of hits on that particular video and stuff, so I am looking forward to the opportunity. I think it will bring some good recognition to Harrison County and West Virginia over the next three years, and hopefully COVID goes away and we'll be in the spotlight even more, so. Real quick, this box, I've got a couple updates on boxes. You know about the FedEx boxes? That the target audience is students who are not attending our schools, homeschool, virtual students, students not in real yet. So we have that going. We've done two weeks. Everything seems to be running smoothly. This Thursday will be week number three. I haven't looked at the number lately, but I can tell you, it's 1,500-plus boxes at this point going out, just coming Thursday. but I can tell you it's 1,500-plus boxes at this point going out, just coming Thursday. Just on Monday, we did push out to the public via social media. We'd already announced to the cafeteria managers and principals we were doing this. But spring break time, students will be off on Thursday, April 1st, Friday, April 2nd, and Monday, April the 5th, 6th, where are the dates? So once again, we're going to use multitudes in the FedEx boxes. So on Monday, via social media, we did push out that any parent who has students attending school may sign up on this form, and it will be just a one-time box, but it will hit students' homes on Thursday, April 1st, to cover those days that we are not in school. So this box, we received some funding for backpack food, to send food home with students, you know, over the weekend. Obviously, this year, backpack programs have been a little different because of COVID. We're really in school all the time. Obviously, now that we're in school, backpack program will pick up, being sent home with students on Friday afternoons. With that money we received, we do have a, some backpack boxes in the warehouse where principals, schools can order and send home. Once those boxes are utilized, we actually have some funds to replace those boxes and hopefully take care of the rest of the year. This box is a little special. I'm not an expert on this, but I got updated quickly. Healthy Harrison was working with different communities. This particular Northview, Healthy Harrison was working with Northview Elementary, specifically on their playground, maybe even inside their gym, to get them some interactive equipment and so forth. And they were asking, what could we do in kind and so forth? So I did meet with John Nardelli. And some other people, and we had a couple meetings, you know, via phone, Skype, Teams. And they asked if I could do a special backpack box. They basically told me what they wanted, and once again, I was able to use multitudes to create this box. This box actually just arrived in our warehouse today. I think if everything goes planned, Northview will receive these sometime this week. And they're actually going to get two boxes, one this week and then another set in April. Actually, Multitude found out that we were going to put flyers in them, and we were going to do that. Actually, put them on top, tape them or something. And once he found out what I was doing, he said, I can put them in the boxes. So he actually put flyers in here. This box is for March. You can even see labeled March, so we know clearly which one they're for March, which one for April, because the flyers are different between March and April. So he's been great to work with and very accommodating, I should say, and so forth. So it's a very simple box, but once again, I'll tell you what they were doing. They wanted to make sure it was somewhat low sugar. It's just something they were concentrating on. And so I worked with multitudes, and this is what we came up with. And I think John Nardelli was very pleased and happy and.
And I appreciate, I want to say I appreciate that, because John Paul called me to see what the school board could do to help this. I said, you know, I said, at least we can do with some sort of a feeding program. And I came to you and told you, and you immediately called in to prepare, and I didn't have to worry about it, so.
And I will add that this is not the only thing we're doing at Northview. As Northview, now the school's a little bit more regular and their programs pick up, we do have through the Child Nutrition Program the ability to do apple snacks program. And I haven't really had large conversations with John about that, as it's really not necessary. It's just something we automatically do, sort of just work with the school directly, and they are starting some things right now, from what I understand. And it will pick up once again as we move forward and so forth, so.
Sometimes with an organization this large, you make a request with someone, and then you ask them the next time if they called you on name, but you got right on it, called, and I appreciate it. I never got another call from John Paul, so I knew you handled it, and I appreciate that.
So, anything else?
Yeah, are you still refereeing?
You're lucky I'm here tonight.
Well, I was getting ready to say, you may not make it to president.
Why's that?
Well, I've seen you refereeing.
That's why I don't disclose my schedule ahead of time. I won't tell you where I'm at tomorrow night, so.
I've seen your DVD going on.
I just happen to be off tonight, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's it for superintendent stuff.
This is down to approval consent items. Is there a motion?
Sooner or later.
Then moved to second. Any discussion? All those who favor signature by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, county benchmark intervention and instructional platform, grades one through eight.
Yeah, this is our annual, well, we do, it's iReady products is what it is, to continue the benchmarks for iReady and the instructional materials for iReady. It was up for renewal, so.
I guess my question, is iReady something that's used statewide, or is that something that we've chosen as opposed to other brands?
We, we have a committee of teachers.
That's what I want to make sure. This, I just want to make sure we're spending $285,000. It came from the teacher up rather than this building down.
That is correct. Yeah, we started looking back in this in 1819 with a committee of teachers and administrators that looked at this program. They were given accounts to look at. We talked to our principals, again, at the recent principals meeting, to see if it was something that we wanted to keep. So this cost is for a beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of year diagnostic, as well as the instructional commitment, and a day of professional development for each one of our schools. For grades, kindergarten, some of our kindergartens use it, grades one through eight. And then Mrs. Mancini's doctor, we also use this for our SAT referrals, our intervention data that our teachers collect, if we have a student that we suspect needs support through an ID. So this data is used for that intervention system and our school-based systems.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Sooner or later.
Second. Moved to second. Any discussion? All those who favor signature by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Memorandum of understanding between United and Summit Center and the National Youth Advocate Program.
Yeah, this is part of the project where our first initial part of that grant was to hire a project coordinator, and we have done that. I'd like to recognize her here tonight. We have Julie Mancini. She's helping oversee this grant with Lola Brown. They're the two kind of in charge of the grant. This is Jill Fratto. She'll be our project coordinator. And the second piece of that was entering into memorandums of understanding with some agencies to supply the therapists at the selected schools. So we now, this is what these are. We interviewed and talked to multiple agencies. These are the ones that committed and said that they were willing to do the project with us. It's a five-year commitment, so, you know, everybody, you have to think about that if you're going to make a five-year commitment. This will allow us to put a mental health person at WI, RCB, and between the Adamston-Wilsonburg project, when that school combines, they'll have, so these will be full-time mental health professionals in all three of those buildings, coordinated by Mrs. Fratto back there. So we're really excited. We want this to go well. We're trying, we're rolling it out. We're working with the schools and making sure that we roll that out correctly and do what we need to do for the kids in those buildings. Those buildings were selected because of the needs there. So we have three, three opportunities to do that. Mrs. Mancini, would you like to say anything about the project? There's been a lot of, a lot of conversation.
I'm curious, if you have questions, I'll answer.
Had a lot of teams meetings and a lot of information coming in. It's about the grant.
It's taken a long time to get the providers on, to, to get their commitment to do this. So this is just, we are only asking for the memorandum conference or to go from this year and next year. We're going to do it again to make sure we have the right people, the right fit before, even though it is a five-year commitment, we're just doing it to end this year and next year at one shot.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Well, second. Then moved to second. Any discussion? All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No old business, no policy updates. Brings us down to personnel matters.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a question to pursuant to Article 6-9-A42 of West Virginia Code. And we're going to executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which it discussed in public might affect the versus reputation of the person.
Second?
Second.
All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will be in executive session.
Adjourn the regular session.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings down to the item on the agenda personnel matters. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I have to recuse myself for my nephew is Nicholas Scott Hope's moving to from South Harrison more four hours than Robert C. Barnett out essentially.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded with the, I guess amended to include Mr. Hope's refusal of that one item. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Legal and disciplinary matters we have none tonight. Board members comments. Mr. Gotter.
One thing I loved about being on this board from the get-go is how we celebrate students who celebrate their accomplishments. We make kids feel special for the outstanding things they do. We make our employees feel special for the outstanding things we do. If we vanillaize this and just make it all bland because we're trying to create everyone equal, I think that's the saddest thing in the world. Because if everyone gets a trophy, then no one tries. No one pushes themselves. I think it's sad when we see people who just like every kid gets a trophy, so no one can get to go there. People work hard and they deserve to be recognized. They deserve to be celebrated because they worked so hard. And it is a slap in the face to those kids to not do that. That's right.
Which message?
I want to personally agree with that. I would say if my son wasn't recognized in the sixth grade WR for his academic achievements, he wouldn't be graduating WBD with a 4.0. It was at that point that he realized what it meant to work and achieve goals and be successful. And to take that away from any student, in my opinion, is just wrong.
Mr. Hope.
Just words of wisdom, a still tone makes a wise head. I'm done.
Mr. Devine.
I don't think about that one for a second. No, I just think that, you know, one thing to remember is that things can be talked through, things can be worked through, and communication is always the most important way to affect any type of change whatsoever. And there has to be a reasonable assumption that both sides are going to listen and come to arguably, you know, a good commitment in the center. So I think that, you know, what we might have witnessed here is a lack of communication and a failure to resolve it. So, you know, I think that that's all I have to say.
And I kind of, I echo that. This is a communication issue and from your part, at least on all these matters we're discussing without actually discussing, then I'll put my faith in our superintendent. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Seconded. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Children of peace, go in peace.